Good evening and welcome to the North School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020. Once again, coming to you remotely. First order of business of tonight is approval of minutes. Committee members, we do have two sets of minutes in our packet, both from August 26th. The first is the minutes from our business meeting and the second is the minutes from executive session.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, 5-0, great. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Dave Catania, you said there were no warrants that you signed this week, correct?
No warrants.
Thank you. So moving on to public forum. Just checking the email address, which as a reminder to the minute. Dr. Thompson, can you make sure to let Donna Dolliner in? She just sent me a message that for some reason she couldn't get in.
Okay, I will do that right now.
Thank you, Maya. We've been pretty good without any tech issues really this whole time. So, you know, last meeting I got kicked out. This meeting, we don't want to let Donna in.
To be able to join us now is an invite that should come to her.
Alright, great. So back to public forum as a reminder to the community that you can email us at NPS School Committee, andora.q12.us. Checking that email address at this time. I do not see any public forum emails that came to us this week. So at 7:08, I am going to declare public forum closed. But if anybody emails us over the next week, it'll be right at public forum next Wednesday, the night. Dr. Thompson, did you have any announcements?
I do not. I'll, I have a few, but they'll be wrapped into my superintendent's report.
Okay, so moving right along to appearances. We do have two appearances tonight. And the first is the introduction of our newly hired principal for the Willet and LMPA. Dr. Thompson, would you like to introduce us to him?
Sure, it's my pleasure. Stephen, can you? Can you, you can now unmute your camera and your microphone so we can see you and hear you. This is Stephen Billard. He comes to us from the Fresden School.
Fesiden, yes?
Fesiden, I was close, Fresden School. He's an experienced administrator and he is, we're lucky to have him. He is our interim principal at the Willet and the Little Mustang Preschool Academy. So we've got him bopping back and forth and he's, he's been here for a little over a week and he's still smiling. So we're, we gotta be doing something right. So let you kind of introduce yourself a little bit to the, to the committee. Actually, why don't we have the committee introduce themselves to Stephen first? Because there's a whole bunch of pitches on here, including Dr. Wyatt, he knows him. So I want to start there. Madam Chair, you want to start?
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Billard. We're so happy to have you, Teresa Stewart, the chair of the school committee. Maya, if you want to go next?
I'm Maya Bodenhoffer. I'm the vice chair of the school committee. And then I guess maybe we'll move on to Dave Catania.
Yep. Hi, Dave Catania. We spoke for a brief second when we started this. Welcome aboard. I didn't know who you were. I was like, who's that guy on a screen? Yes, mute. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Anne Marie. No, hi, Joan.
Hi, Stephen. I'm Joan Giblin. I'm a member of the school committee.
Thank you.
Then Anne Marie.
Yep, welcome. I'm Anne Marie Mazzola, a member of the school committee.
Five of you, right?
There's five, yes.
Alright. Well, thank you for welcoming me. I appreciate it. As Dave said, I interviewed, I think, I think I interviewed two weeks ago today and I started last, today, today's Wednesday. So two weeks from yesterday, I started last Tuesday. And thank you for having me. Dave might have said also I'm the interim principal for the Willet and the Little Mustang Preschool Academy. A little bit about myself. This is my 30th or 31st year in education. I stopped counting in my 25th year as an administrator. I've, during my career, I've bridged both the public sector and the independent world. So this is my 14th year as a, starting my 15th year as an elementary school public principal. And I've spent 11 years as a lower school division head at independent schools. Most recently, as Dave said, as the head of a lower school division of 200 all-boys at the Fesiden School in West Newton. And there's a, a lot of energy with 200 boys, a lot of energy with early childhood to begin with. But 200 boys just adds a little bit more excitement and rambunctiousness into the mix. I've also spent nine years in the Southborough Public Schools where my, my first year in my, my building was 524 children and we rose up to almost 600 children. We didn't quite meet that cap. And, and I've also been in interim for a year before. Once when I, not quite as challenged, well, it's probably more challenging this year. But when I did an interim about 10 years ago, we, we moved our entire family to the big island of Hawaii with two cats. And so we don't have to move across the country and then go over the Pacific Ocean this time. So I'm just only about 10 miles away from Norwood. And it, it's, it's been a great first eight days. I'm excited to, to bring my experience of what I know as an administrator and as an educator to the Norwood Public Schools. So I'm excited to join a great team. I'm still getting to know a lot of the names and the faces and who's assigned with who. The lead teachers, Patty and Emily, have just been fantastic with me, trying to bring me up to speed as fast as I can. I'm asking a lot of questions, getting a lot of information. But I, but I, I'm confident that I can bring my experience of an administrator and as an educator to really help support the students, the families and all the faculty and staff. Additionally, Dave, Alec, Joe and Lori have answered all my questions so far. And the other elementary school principals have, have wrapped me into their fold, which has been fantastic. We have a couple of weeks before we opened up as a hybrid and in our remote learning school and for our, our students with the most needs for four days a week. We've been having faculty meetings and professional development this week. Tomorrow, when we meet as a, at the Willet, we'll be talking about, you know, a lot of important things. But social emotional learning of our children's obviously important. And we have three books that we got recently. We have Lucy's Masks that we'll be unveiling with our children. Ron and Rona Fight the Corona. And The Time We Did Nothing. And we'll be previewing these books as a faculty and staff tomorrow at the Willet. Because we want to normalize a little bit of what we can for our children to make them feel welcome into our community. Having gone through this last spring with pre-K and K children, it's, it's a tough age to do remote learning. So we want to take what the Norwood educators learned last spring, what I learned last spring, and mesh those worlds together into, into some best practices for the children. So we will work together to do that. And I'll leave it at that, Dave. If you'd like specific questions that you have for me, I'd be happy to answer. But I just, I wanted to give a broad overview of who I am and my excitement to be joining your community and your schools.
I'll just say, Mr. Billard, that, you know, remote meeting is often hard and challenging. But I feel your energy and I feel there's a connection already. And that is a very hard thing to facilitate over a screen. But I feel it and I appreciate that you're here. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Dr. Thompson, that you want us to know at this time about Mr. Billard?
No, no, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you informed on his progress, but he's already on the ground running. And as you can see, he's, he's, he's has a really good way about him that I think is going to help the Willet and the Little Mustang Preschool Academy. So we're glad, we're glad he's with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, appreciate it.
So moving along to our next appearance, we have Mr. Longley from the high school here with us tonight to talk with us about athletics update. So, Mr. Longley?
Okay, good evening. How is everybody? Thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining us.
I think, I know I sent along the return to play slideshow. Dr. Thompson, were you going to be able to queue that up for me or?
I can do that. Yep.
I'm not, I'm not going to read every slide. I'll kind of, you know, give an overview and then I'll be obviously prepared to answer any questions that people might have.
Okay, let me know. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so actually, you know, in full disclosure, we met as Tri-Valley League Athletic Directors a few weeks ago and started brainstorming ideas and in ways that we could return to athletics this fall safely based on the guidelines that had been presented to us by a number of different agencies. And so this was kind of, this slideshow was a collective effort of all of us, you know, within the league and modified obviously for each of our, our district. And as with everything nowadays, everything is subject to change based on new information or what have you. So this was, you know, a nice jumping off point for us and a starting point. And we think a lot of things will, will, will hold during the course of the fall. But as always, things evolve and change and things are still changing every day. So we wanted to thank the community for being patient over the course of the last few months. We know when we, you know, we're, when school stopped, we were, we had just actually finished our winter season banquet the Monday when school closed on that Thursday. Spring sports were about to begin the following Monday. So we just capped off a really successful winter season, which was our most successful in Norwood in probably over two decades. And we were really looking forward to an exciting spring season. And obviously, the pandemic came on and we've spent months kind of waiting and wanting to see what would happen for this school year. And so we wanted to thank the communities and the parents and the kids for all their patience in waiting and all of the groups that put a lot of work into, into giving the kids an opportunity this fall to participate. The MIAA, COVID Task Force, EEA, the MIA overall, DESI. They all collaborated to put a plan together. And if you follow other states, that wasn't always the case. You have different agencies that are competing still against each other. And right away in June, when they started talking about preparing for a potential fall season, all of the different agencies got together and said that we will all work together to collaboratively put together a plan once we're able to do that. So I think that that has, this has really helped this process. So a lot of what I'll talk about, you know, the, it's certainly going to be, you know, a different year in athletics as it is, you know, for everybody else in education. The way that the school year has been broken down to this point is we'll have a fall season one, which the earliest possible start date is September 18th. And the season can close no later than November 20th. And then we'll have a winter season, which would start at the traditional, the traditional Monday after Thanksgiving, but would end earlier, which would end over February vacation to make room for what is being called fall season two or a floating season, which would start the Monday after February vacation and run through April vacation. And then we would have your traditional spring season, which would be a little bit later, start after April vacation and actually run through July 3rd. The reason that this floating season was created is because as a high-risk sport, we'll talk about a little bit the next slide, football and competitive cheer were deemed not allowed to participate in the fall season. So all the different groups decided to create an additional floating season to give those sports an opportunity to potentially participate this year. So what we will be offering in, in Norwood for the first fall season, we will have varsity in JV golf. Golf trials will actually start on the earliest possible date, which is 9/18. Because of course availability, daylight, it's important that if we're gonna, you know, try and have a golf season that we start as soon as we can. Because typically the golf season does end a little bit earlier because it's tough to play nine holes if you start after four o'clock, unless you get later in the fall. We'll be offering varsity boys cross-country, varsity girls cross-country, varsity and JV boys soccer, varsity and JV girls soccer, and varsity and JV field hockey. All of those sports right now are planned to start on Saturday, 9/26 for practices with the first games beginning on October 10th. I had said previously that football and competitive cheer have been moved to the floating season. The athletic directors and principals in the Tri-Valley League and also in all of District 7, which includes the Hockamock and the Bay State Conference. And a lot of other leagues across the state decided to move girls volleyball from the fall season one to the floating season so that we wouldn't have any sports competing indoors during the fall season. So the EEA has developed, you know, level of risk for each sport. And as of right now, the lower risk sports are golf and boys and girls cross-country, moderate risk sports, field hockey, boys soccer, girls soccer and volleyball. And then the higher risk sports, cheer and football. Some Tri-Valley League information. The Tri-Valley League has decided to divide the league actually in two geographic pods. And will not allow spectators at Fall One Athletic Games and Competitions. Right now, I just met with, you know, I know Brian's with us and we'll be collaborating a lot with Brian Dunn and NCM. And, and Jack Tolman and I spoke for a long time yesterday. And they're obviously fully on board as, as they always are with trying to livestream as many of our home events as possible. We will be hosting all of these events with the exception of golf and cross-country in, on the, in our athletic stadium at Norwood High School, which will make it easier for them to do that. Right now, they're, they're working out the details and we know that they'll do the best they can to provide that for the community and the parents. Pod one is really, you know, the, the western area of 109 there. Ashland, Bellingham, Holliston, Hopkinton, Medway and Norton. And then the second pod, which Norwood is included in, Dedham, DS, Medfield, Millis, Norwood and Westwood. The idea was to limit contact and travel. And we'll actually only be competing against the schools in our pod this fall. So we're not going to cross over with, with the, with Pod One. So that was something that people felt limited risk and gave us a, one more opportunity to compete the fall, compete in the fall season safely. Okay, the individual sport modifications, which actually, they were just released on Friday afternoon. So we were able to, to send those out to the coaches and on Friday. So we've actually kind of been working a little bit, you know, I said, gave the coach, the fall coaches the weekend to kind of review them and then we've been meeting to talk about those modifications and, and how we're going to safely implement them. Because there, there has been some, you know, some significant changes to some of the sports that we're going to offer that the various MIAA individual sport committees have, have come up with for, for those sports. So that's an ongoing process that's, that's live happening now that we're, we're working through in order to be prepared for the start of the season on the 26th. Transportation, now we plan on continuing to offer transportation to all of our athletic events. We know that the guidelines, you know, you can have 23 people on, on a bus. So in a lot of cases, you know, instead of taking one bus, we'll be taking two when we travel to away events. But there is going to be fewer contests. So when we're talking about costs, the cost for transportation for fall season one will be similar to what it was last year. Obviously, all procedures and policies will be followed. You know, we're looking at, you know, 20 students on a bus and then, you know, two or three coaches. As far as the school committee, I know we're presenting this tonight, just, just so that, you know, everyone's on the same page. In regards to any type of a vote for athletic participation this year, it's been released that if, if a yellow, green or unshaded district that is only offering remote learning to its high school students wishes to participate in the regularly scheduled sports season, they must be approved by their local school committee. So right now, with Norwood being, you know, in the, in the hybrid mode and not fully remote, there's not any specific vote that the school committee would have to take at this time for, to allow athletic participation. So that's a, that's a general overview. I do have, you know, there's certainly a lot more specifics in regards to, you know, practices and gameplay that we're going to be, that have been released, that we're working on right now with, with the fall coaches. And like I said earlier, it's an ongoing process. I think to kind of summarize things a little bit, people, you know, were really looking forward to, you know, the potential of a fall season and, and with high hopes and, you know, youth sports happened and there's certain things happening over the summer. And then, then the, the different agencies, including the MIAA and EEA and the COVID Task Force, release their modifications, which would include, you know, high school sport for the season. So everyone's cautiously optimistic right now, seeing that there's going to be a lot of changes and a little bit, you know, apprehensive too, because there's been a lot of changes, right? So as soon as we can, you know, get together, learn all of these modifications, start working with the student athletes, you know, get some sort of normalcy back. I think that that would be obviously what's best for the kids and what they want and one of the main purposes of, of, you know, interscholastic athletics. We're going to get there and, you know, and it's going to take a lot of work from the community, the parents, the kids, the coaches, to all work together to, to obviously with the safety of everybody being, you know, the most important factor.
Thank you, Mr. Longley. I have one just clarifying question and point of information for everybody. Hopefully this does not happen. But if Norwood is in the red at the start of any season, we're not allowed to participate or play. Is that correct?
You would have to get approval from the district sport committee if you move. You couldn't start, but once, say you moved off of red, you would then need approval of the district athletic committee, not, not necessarily the school committee in order to participate in a season, one of the additional seasons like the floating season. I think a part of the reason the floating season was created is in case, like you're saying, something happens, someone, a community goes red, then you have to stop right there or you can't start. Like you said, then there could be a possibility that you move those sports to the floating season. But it's not automatic. The district athletic committee would have to approve that. So you would participate it in like 80, 90% of your season. They may not say, okay, you can start all over in the floating season. But to your original question, yes, you couldn't start if you're red.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the committee? Dave Catania?
Dave Jonathan, thank you for this presentation. Really appreciate it. As a former track, lacrosse, etc., I just had a question. So for cross-country, totally safe, how is it going to work? I mean, it's going to be not a shotgun start anymore. It's just going to be everybody going, getting timed one at a time, wait five minutes before somebody goes? How's that going to work exactly? Because I just, I can't imagine a bunch of people running and breathing heavily in a pack together. You know, running next to each other, neck and neck, you know, just seems a little crazy. So there's a way to do this, right?
Yeah, so the, some of the modifications in cross-country are, I mean, we're fortunate. We, our course is at the Cokely Middle School. So one thing the Cokely Middle School has is space. So we can effectively line everybody up in a safe distance when we start. And then, you know, the kids will kind of, you stagger them in that way or stagger release. And you have to keep, I don't know, when you competed, Dave, did you get the popsicle sticks at the end when you came in? So there's going to be more tracking because not everyone's going to go off at the same time. But if you don't have enough room, there's even, which maybe some other schools or some other courses don't have. They, they talked about you could, everyone could possibly start on the course, you know, at a safe distance apart. So those are some of the considerations. I think with us having the space at the beginning, we would just do a staggered start. And you also have to accommodate kind of a wider area at the finish too. We wouldn't have that kind of traditional tunnel. So, so that's kind of where it gets at.
That's fair enough. I'm glad everybody thought about that. That's, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I saw, Mr. Longley, that the MIAA had released sport-specific guidance. And it looked like each sport was about 10 to 15-page documents of modifications. So I don't envy your job right now, having to monitor and keep track of all that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, a lot of things that the, the league did was really try to, look, it's, we get it, you know, we weren't even sure there was going to be a season. You know, we're trying to be very protective of that. And that's our responsibilities as athletic administrators. And I think one of the things that we all have to understand, and this may be an unfortunate part of this, but it's kind of an unfortunate part of where we are, education overall. We can't look back to last season or look ahead to next season and think that it's going to be the same. This is just going to, it's going to be completely different. And it's an opportunity if we can do it safely and people can, you know, get on the same page and, and follow the rules and protocols, then we will be able to provide this opportunity for the kids, which is what all everyone wanted. And I hope that that's the case and we're working towards that. And I believe it will be, you know, hopefully in a few months when, you know, the season has concluded. But honestly, you know, people really need to, you know, work together. They can't look, look back or look ahead. We have to stay in this moment and try and figure out a way to safely do this together, you know, and that's important. And not everyone's going to like all the modifications. Believe me, we're already, I'm already dealing with it all, you know, and, but it's, it's, it's a new time we're living in right now and, and we have to work within that. And honestly, a lot of the things that have come up are just for fall season one. You know, potentially by the time we get to the floating season or, you know, the spring season, we could be looking at a more regular type of athletic programming offering, you know? And that's, that's, that could happen, you know? So we are where we are right now. We're, we're allowed to participate. We have guidelines. You know, I wanted to thank Bob Barksdale, our athletic trainer, because we have been offering a strength and conditioning program for the past five weeks at the high school, following all of the protocols from the Board of Health. And we had over 120 kids registered for that and probably about 75, you know, 200 kids each time participate. So we've, we've tried to give the kids an opportunity to kind of get ready if they choose. It's a free program under a guidance from, you know, qualified people that are, that's a safe environment and that the kids can prepare. So we've done that and, you know, we're looking forward to, to, to the season. It's going to be, it's going to be different, but it's going to be exciting to finally. I know that I've been back around the school. to be exciting to finally, I know that I've been back around the school the last number of days, and, you know, I know it's not the same, the energy isn't the same as the first day of school, but I feel the energy again coming back, you know what I mean? And I hope the coaches and kids do too, once we get, start to get around each other again a little bit. And I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from the committee at this time? Dr. Thompson or Mr. Longley, was there anything else that needed to come before the school committee tonight related to athletics?
Nope, don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. So moving right along, Dr. Thompson, to your fifth reopening plan and update.
Hang on, let me grab those slides here. Somehow it jumped to the middle. But yes, so this is a school reopening update number five. They look the same, but they're numbered differently and they're dated differently. So we will go through, in this update, I'd like to share with you information about our cohorts or notification and information about our cohorts, our staffing, where we are in that, in that process, and we are in progress. Revisit the staggered start that I presented last week. There's a couple changes, and that was shared with families today. Talk a little bit more about transportation. And again, just kind of let the community and the committee know what our next steps are going forward. So there was a, I sent a Blackboard Connect phone call home to all of the families today, talking about cohorts. And cohorts are your blue, your gold, your F cohort. And basically, that determines whether you are a Monday, Tuesday in-person cohort, or you are in the Thursday, Friday in-person cohort. So that information will be shared tomorrow, so that families can start making plans. We are still working to assign teachers. Assigning cohorts is important, because that now has to be shared with the bus company, so that they can start doing bus routes and bus seat assignments. So that is the first step. We are still hiring teachers, and have just started hiring teachers. So that's in the process. We worked really, really hard to balance the numbers. It is important that the numbers remain balanced. To unbalance the numbers would put us in a position where we would be going below our social distancing measures that we have committed to. So I'd like everyone to know that it is not, it is not really a possibility to start moving those around, because it will throw off those numbers. The RLA or the Remote Learning Academy will also be notified. So you will get an email tomorrow that will say whether you're in the gold cohort or the blue cohort. And I would, I would say which one's gold and which one's blue, but I think I might mix that up, so I won't. The other cohort is the F cohort. The F cohorts, the F stands for quote-unquote fuller time. And those are our high-needs special education students. And then they will also receive a notification if they are in the RLA cohort, those that are remote all the time and not coming into school. We first worked to ensure the accuracy of the numbers. We did fleece through those, that initial data that we talked a little bit about last week. And teacher information, when we do get that out, we're hoping to have that out next week. We probably will see some to-be-ds or to-be-determined, because we are going to be in an ongoing hiring process. So staffing, at this point, we have positions posted as anticipated openings, unless it was a leave or retirement. We are fast-tracking the hiring process. Most of these positions, we hired as a one-year long-term sub. And moving that through our process between posting, we do have them posted as emergency posted, so they're open until filled. There are several teaching positions open. So if you are interested in joining our ranks, please check School Spring. We are going to need paraprofessionals. I believe we're going to have some paraprofessionals who happen to have teaching licenses jump into some of these teaching positions, and we're going to need to prepare them, to backfill those. So if you are interested in trying out, working in education for a year, we would love to have you apply. And again, School Spring, just go to schoolspring.com, and you will find that. And then just search for Norwood, and you will see all the positions that are up there. If you are interested, please get them in right away. So I want to go back to the staggered start, and again, go back to, we want to ensure our protocols are being followed. We have our traffic patterns up and set up. We have our dismissal and arrival protocols and routines down, and we're going to start that with small groups. So this also went home in the email that I sent, sent home this afternoon detailing this, but it's important that everyone understands that all students except kindergarten will start remote until the in-person hybrid piece kicks in. So Remote Learning Academy, again, will begin on the 17th. Please pay attention, because we're going to need to get technology out to families, books out to families, and things along that line. There will be a schedule for people to drive by the schools and get those. So you're going to need to pay attention to announcements coming out over the next week or so. So September through the 17th through the 22nd, we were not able to do kindergarten screening. We are going to do kindergarten screening at that point in time. That will be 8:30 to 3 o'clock. The Willett will be contacting kindergarten parents to schedule a screening time. It will be scheduled. It won't be a lineup sort of thing. On Thursday, September 17th, our cohort F students or our high-need students in preschool will start in person, and that is the four-day-a-week program. All other students in grades one through 12 will begin remote learning. On Monday, the 21st, our transition grades will, will start with our in-person part of the hybrid. All other students will remain in remote learning. Again, this is our chance to try out our protocols, ensure our drop-off is well-organized. There will probably be some tweaks during that week. We want to get those transition kids in. They're starting in new schools. And it'll give us a chance to make sure. We're basically hoping to only spend one week doing that. That is very aggressive compared to other districts, because on the 28th, we'll, I'll skip one, we're talking about everybody else coming in on the, on the in-person hybrid piece. But let me go back. Thursday, the 24th, the kindergarten gold cohort, I guess blue is Monday, Monday, Tuesday, gold is, is Thursday, Friday. They will start on the 24th. Blue cohort is Monday, Tuesday. They will be starting remotely on September 24th. On Monday, the 28th, okay, the remaining grades will start their hybrid in-person schedule, if you will. So this is, this is a pretty aggressive ramping up. We're trying to get everybody in before, and, you know, in that in-person rotation before we get to October. And again, our hope is to have our students in as soon as possible. Staffing is going to be a key piece to being able to do this. This is why this is our, really, our next focus over the next week or so, is to get people in the seats and get them trained and ready to go. We might have to adjust some of these dates, especially around the 21st and the 28th, but we will fill you in as that becomes necessary, if that becomes necessary. All right. So, so what does this mean for families? Most of our students will remain in remote learning until the 28th. There is that phase-in approach. We'll need to get materials out to families, so please stay tuned. Your schools will be contacting you while picking up books, workbooks, Chromebooks, dropping off. We need to get some Chromebooks back from families. Please dust them off, plug them in, get them ready to drop off. And again, those are going to be scheduled. We're not going to have a logjam and have people in a position where they're not able to keep socially distanced. And again, I said before, staffing levels, our ability, our ability to hire and get onboard people may influence these dates moving forward. So transportation, we're still in the process of the bus routes. A key piece of that is getting the cohorts to the bus company. As I mentioned, I think, last time, not only do we have to check and adjust our routes, but we actually have to assign seats on the bus. So that will start in earnest. These routes very well might change from what they traditionally are. It's, it's kind of interesting, even though we got a piece of software last year to redo bus routes. Many of our bus routes remained the same. The people that had done them by hand really knew the back corridors and streets of Norwood pretty well. And anyone who put in a request after the cutoff date are put on a waitlist, and we'll just have to see after school starts whether there is room and where there is room. So next steps, developing our personnel ask and our budget ask. That's, I think, next on the agenda. Teacher assignments will be done. We still may need to do some adjusting going forward, but that is the next piece that, that needs to happen after that. Student cohorts and assignments, I mentioned, those are going out tomorrow. Hiring, hiring, and more hiring. Entry and dismissal schedules, building procedures, traffic patterns, talking about mass breaks, where to go mass breaks, lunch schedule, lunch assignments, lunch seating, all of those things. Our bus assignments and seats will probably come out close to when we start in-person coming in. So please, you are going to need to look for that. And we're going to need people to look at times, look at routes, to understand that. And of course, extended day, the after-school program that we are working on, the remote days, we have made progress. I feel pretty confident that we will have detailed descriptions of those programs for you next Wednesday. So in closing, I need to remind everyone that the situation is fluid. It is very difficult. I often tell people, we are trying to do three years of work in three months. We're working as fast as we can. We do appreciate your patience. The ultimate reality is we are not going to be able to meet every request and continue to move forward. So stopping and trying to readjust or go backwards is not helping us continue to move forwards. We continue to receive new mandates and expectations, even as we're trying to finish this planning, which is obviously causing us to spend energy on some of those. Simply, I've had several conversations with people around about why we need more teachers. So if you think about trying to reduce the number of kids in the classrooms to only half in there, and you still have to have those kids actively engaged with a teacher if they're remote, you can easily understand that we're talking about trying to significantly increase teachers, especially at the elementary level. So we're trying to, we're trying to recreate school in an environment that is both smaller in-person and remote at the same time. And just by definition, if you have half the kids in the classroom, and you're going to need twice as many teachers, because the other half also need to be taught at the same time. I was speaking to a superintendent colleague this afternoon about this wonderful, fluid, and difficult situation. And I, and I said to him, I said, well, this is the ultimate unfunded mandate, because there has been some money from the state, but very little money from, no money, very little money coming from the federal government to, to address the staffing issue. So this is something we're working through. We are trying to be as tight and as conservative as we can, but being tight and conservative also means that we don't have a lot of flexibility. So again, remind people to be patient. I wish that I was not trying to free something and disappointing people in multiple avenues, but that is unfortunately the situation that we are in as a school system. And we're not alone in that. This is the entire state, the entire country. Schools are a cornerstone of our society, and that cornerstone has been half toward third, thirded, depending on how you want to look at it. And it's difficult to meet the needs when you can only have half of the students in any one place at a time. So. And that, I think, concludes my, my update on the reopening. I don't know if there's a slide that anyone would like me to go back to before I stop sharing?
Everybody shaking their head, no, Dr. Thompson?
No, okay. So I will, I will stop sharing that. And I don't know if there's any questions or any more information the committee would like, but I will do my best.
Any questions, comments for Dr. Thompson at this time? Okay.
Thank you.
Did you have any other updates for us under your superintendent report this evening?
Nope. I think that, I think I've pretty much covered everything we can cover. There's a lot going on, and sometimes you get so busy with what you're trying to do that some of the other things get, are still sitting on the, on the table.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. So next on the agenda, under budget, we do have another budget subcommittee update and presentation for you. And Maya, would you like to guide us through that discussion this evening?
Do you want me to?
Dr. Thompson, can you share that slide with us? So after our last school committee meeting, Teresa and I, as the budget subcommittee, met to review a little bit more detail on a few things. In particular, we spoke with Hugh Galligan from the high school, Laurie Semino from the special education department, and Diane Ferrera, and Brian Riley from the elementary principals, to kind of just dive a little bit deeper into, well, actually, we weren't really so much diving deeper into those numbers. They had gone deeper into those numbers and were sharing their findings with us. And, and so we wanted to put together this update for everybody. So on the next slide, talk about, the things we want to talk about today is updated recommendations for elementary staffing, some special education needs, and the high school plan. So when we're talking about the elementary needs, the principals had gone through and confirmed enrollments in the Remote Learning Academy and the main district model. And based on that and our discussion, they are reducing the, the administration is reducing the staffing request for the Remote Learning Academy by two teachers. And we also discussed the staffing for the hybrid model. And so that is on the next slide. Just want to talk a little bit about the hybrid model challenges. I mean, we were talking about the different levels. The, the high school has a completely different model, and, and, you know, the, the students are only getting two half-days there. It's a, just a very different model. And high school in general is very different from the other levels of school. The Coakley Middle School has the advantage that they do have several larger classrooms. When they open up those accordion doors, they can double up and get some larger classrooms. So that makes it easier to bring in some larger cohorts of students. And at the, the Willett for the kindergarten, there's the advantage that all those classrooms already had paraprofessionals assigned to them. And so they had, the in-person classes will all have two adults, which makes it easier to spread the classes, the students between two classes if necessary. But at the grade one to five elementary schools, they don't have either of those advantages of the larger rooms or the paraprofessionals assigned to each one. So we get into some tricky logistics. So number one, there's a very limited number of students who can fit in a classroom with the six-foot spacing. So that limits us, depending on the school, and even sometimes the specific classroom within the school. Some classrooms can only hold 10 students, and even our largest classrooms can only hold 15 students at a time. So the model for the elementary school is some team teaching, generally, two in-person teachers and a remote teacher working together for each grade at each school. So if you have three teachers, the two in-person and one remote, and it's, your class sizes are really set by how many people, kids can fit in those in-person rooms. So for the smaller rooms that can only handle 10, two teachers can only handle 40 students. So the three teachers together are only handling 40 students. If the rooms are bigger and you can handle 15 in a room with the six-foot spacing, then that maxes out at 60 students for the three teachers. So it really depends on how many students are enrolled and the size of the rooms. For some of our grid levels, we may have only one in-person teacher and one remote teacher. In that case, that class size, that total class size maxes out at 20 or 30 students, depending on the physical space of the classroom. And so many grades require at least three teachers per school. So on the next slide, after carefully reviewing the enrollment, the elementary principals made some suggestions for possible reductions. And so the budget subcommittee is suggesting that, along with the, the administration, that we reduce the request by two teachers. So that includes some creative solutions, such as an in-person teacher who would teach one section of third grade and one section of fourth grade, obviously not on the same day. It would be like Monday, Tuesday, third grade, Thursday, Friday, fourth grade. It would be like Monday, Tuesday, third grade, Thursday, Friday, fourth grade, working with those other teams of teachers who are supporting those grades. So that together, they're able to, now that they've really reviewed the enrollment requests and verified where everybody is going to start the year, that request has come down from 21 to 17 additional elementary teachers. So then for special education, the special education department isn't just looking at numbers. They have to look at the specific needs of all the students who have requested the Remote Learning Academy enrollment. And the special education department has determined that some special education teachers will be needed to support those students. So you know, one thing that we need to keep in mind is that in-person teachers in the substantially separate classrooms cannot provide this, all the services needed for the RLA students. And so across the district for the remote learning, we're looking at a request for three special education teachers to meet those mandated needs. And you know, as we've talked about before, these are mandates. And one of the mandates is that families can choose whether to be remote or in the main district model. And people make those decisions for a variety of reasons. And the school district needs to accommodate those requests. So based on that and the needs, we are going to need to increase the special education staffing a little bit. And then I think the next slide is about the high school. So the high school has been reviewing the teacher assignments and the student course requests and working through all that. And they did confirm their need for the special education and the English language learner positions that we talked about last week. Those are separate from the ones I was just talking about for the remote learning. This is for the high school's needs. But the good news is that the high school expects to be able to cover most classes with the high school staff and therefore really reduce the use of edgenuity at the online tool that we had talked about. However, they are going to need to increase their teaching staff by 1.6 FTEs. As Dr. Thompson was talking about, you know, a lot of this comes down to space and how many students you can now fit in a room. And a lot of those rooms can only fit 12. And so then your two cohorts and classes absolutely max out at 24. But that's only if you can actually do 12 and 12. If there's 12 in one cohort and 10 in the other, then you know, you can't have 10 in one cohort and 14 in the other. It needs to be a maximum of 12 in each cohort. So there is a need to increase the teaching staff by a total of 1.6 FTEs. But the high school's plan is to increase the time of some of the current part-time teachers. So we're not expecting that this is additional bodies. It likely won't be additional benefits because if anybody's already at a point five, then they get benefits already. So there are some teachers who would be increasing their level. And then the high school is also requesting two paraprofessionals for student supervision in a couple of classrooms. So what that brings them to on the next slide. So the budgetary needs of the high school are significantly reducing that cost of edgenuity, which we were thinking might be as much as $350,000. We were talking about putting that, at least a lot of that cost in a grant, but that number is now coming down. We think around $100,000. Adding the 1.6 FTEs is probably in the neighborhood of about $90,000. That is a little bit complicated because it depends on exactly where those different FTEs go to the different teachers at the different salary levels. But that's a round number. And then the two paraprofessionals, we expect to be about $46,000. So all told, if you get to the next slide, new staffing requests are the two instructional technology specialists that we talked about two meetings ago. Now 17 elementary teachers, three special education teachers. We had talked about one last time, but that's now three. Two high school teachers for special education and ELL, which we had talked about last time. The 1.6 FTE increase at the high school. And then the two NHS paraprofessionals. So we think we're looking at a budget increase of about 1.35 million. So that's where we're at with that. And then on the next slide, we're looking at some of the other costs that, you know, we've talked about the edgenuity, the Cogly Middle School tents, some of the PPE, the plexiglass, things like that. And those are going to be covered by grants or other sources. So those aren't hitting our direct budget. So just want to remind everybody that last week, we talked about ways that we thought we could absorb about a million dollars into our budget for this year. Some of that money we might want to recoup later so that we could do more curriculum work next year. But you know, we aren't ready to spend that curriculum money this year regardless of money. It's that's just in terms of the ability to, we don't have the bandwidth to choose a, to pilot and choose a good curriculum at this point. So we do have, you know, about a million dollars we can absorb there. And then the other thing is you'll remember that the town meeting approved our budget, but they asked us to hold back $300,000 that we wouldn't spend right away. So we have $300,000 worth of costs that were put on hold for this year. And so if we do get that money, then that is another 300,000 that's in the budget. So I think we, you know, not ready to say we're not going to need any money, not at all. Because there's a whole bunch of things that could still play fall, you know, like even utilities alone might be a budget buster this year if we really go through the winter with all the windows open. But, but at this point, I think that I feel comfortable recommending that we move forward with all of these hires. And we can, you know, make this work in terms of the budget for now. So I think that was the last slide.
It was.
Is there anything anybody wanted to go back and look at?
Doesn't look like it, Maev.
Everybody glazed over.
That's just what, three hours of work for our subcommittee? Plus more when you put the presentation together, which by the way, thank you so much for always doing that on behalf of the budget subcommittee.
No problem.
But questions, comments, concerns based on the budget subcommittee presentation?
It was not, I apologize for not having this at my fingertips. What are we cutting to get to the 1 million? Can you just, let me just go through that again? That's my first question. And my second question is, so edgenuity would be covered under a grant, right?
Yeah.
So I appreciate the fact that we're reducing those costs, but I'm wondering if, does it make sense to go with something that will be covered through a reimbursement or grants from the state? And reduce the number of teachers overall at the high school? Would that be a possibility or no?
I don't know that the grant is coming from the state. And, and I think that choice was made educationally, not budget wise. I really just was mentioning it as a, as a budget thing. So I would, you know, defer to the administrators on that. But I can answer your question about the, the $1 million in, like where we were talking about, that was $250,000 for curriculum. $100,000 in revolving funds.
Yeah.
Half a million dollars in chapter 70 and $150,000 in things that we were, like not going under, that we were able to push to grants. You know, things like the middle school late bus, we're not going to be running after school programs like middle school. There's no late bus. So, you know, stuff like that.
I'm concerned. I'm, I appreciate that we will be able to find the money this year. I am still incredibly concerned about next year. And so looking to drive down costs and put costs in things that we can be reimbursed for, grant that are grant funded wherever possible. So I appreciate that that decision may have been made educationally. I think we have, we cannot debate this from a one-year perspective. We have to debate this from a two to three year perspective. That's my piece.
Other questions, thoughts? Dr. Thompson, is there anything that you would add about the work of the budget subcommittee with, with you and your administrative team over this week?
Yeah, well, I think, I think we've done a very, you know, I mean, this, everybody involved has really taken a microscope to this to find, you know, cost, least cost analysis and still, still keep some, the quality of the program. So, you know, a lot of work and a lot of time by the administrative team, a lot of work and analysis by the budget subcommittee. You know, we're, we're pretty close, 300, 400,000 off them. That's, I mean, originally when I, when I looked at this a while ago, I was thinking it was going to be, you know, a 2.4 million dollar ask. And we were going to come up with about a million and we're going to be coming back with about a million four or something on that line as an ask from the town. You know, so the other thing to keep in mind is my colleague, Dr. Wyatt's just pointed out is that we are hiring these teachers as, you know, one-year positions. We are trying to be cost effective. Some of the things, you know, with the grants have limitations on what you can put, put into them. And working with that and working, we've done more grant work this summer than I've ever seen in my entire life. So, so there are, there are limitations with how we can use that, that money. And specifically those monies were put in there for one-time costs. So that's kind of where we're approaching it from.
So, so my question then, right, which I started with is, if we put more money into, if we put, if we use edgenuity more, we save more money, right? Because we believe that that cost is going to be covered under a grant versus teachers, which will not be covered under a grant. Is that?
Yes and no. Because first of all, edgenuity is not offering or taking on any, anything fifth grade or below in any district at this point in time. The other thing with fifth grade and below is they do not offer live teachers, which is why we did not look at that. So we only looked, looked at edgenuity to fill in gaps at the high school. It is rather expensive. I don't know if Dr. Wyatt has that per course, but it's cost. I can't remember, I don't have it here in front of me, but it's, oop, you're muted. But it's, but it's pretty significant to have a kid in a classroom. It's more expensive to have a live teacher through edgenuity.
Right.
A lot of cases than it would be to hire a teacher. At the high school, we're not looking at hiring teachers. We're going to maximize our, our staff. The problem at the high school is that in order to get the distancing down, we had to lower the number we would normally enroll in a course. So to make sure we don't have kids that are locked out, that is the least cost effective solution for a few kids, the five or six who can't get that particular course. Because we've lowered the enrollment down to, you know, 18 or 20 from 25.
Okay. That was my question.
Okay.
Are we hiring teachers instead of paying for some, instead of using something that will eventually be reimbursed? And the answer to that question is no.
No, no, using, we're using edgenuity to fill in the gaps. We can't fill because we had to lower the numbers at the high school level. Edgenuity at the elementary level does not include live teaching through them. So that's really, all they do is offer a curriculum, you know, and a pathway. So that's from, from our standpoint, that's a problem. The other thing that we looked at is a, at the elementary level, we have programs, and you just moved on me, on my grid. So a, at the elementary level, we have programs, there's approach. And to go away from that and then come back to that hopefully next year, we felt was, was also disruptive as well. Let alone the, and edgenuity is pretty new and it basically started as a high school credit recovery sort of piece. And I don't think they really developed or thought that they would be in a position to offering that kind of thing for elementary students. So. So there, so this is, this is a model where we are working to be cost effective. Keep the quality of our program. It is still going to be different. It is still going to be remote. It's not going to be coming to school five days. You know, but we, we want the quality there for our kids. We don't want to lose time and, and the progress we've, we've made in the last couple of years.
Teresa apologizes her, she briefly lost internet. She's trying to get back on right now. So I guess I'm taking, running questions if anybody else has them at the moment. Dr. Thompson, do you think that we need to take a vote on approving these positions so that we can move forward?
Yes, please. Yep.
Hopefully Teresa will be back on soon. Let me, let me check on her. You know what, how about we table this for a moment? And let's see. Dr. Thompson, do we have any donations or anything like that that we have to talk about?
Let me, I haven't scrolled it all the way to the bottom. Actually, no. So the only.
It's like 90% of the filler stuff.
It was a very good attempt. We did not have donations. The other thing that's on the agenda is the school committee resolution on COVID testing.
I know, and I knew Teresa wanted to be, oh, look at Teresa.
I'm back.
All right, excellent.
There, there may or may not have been a ball accident downstairs in my living room that knocked over our router and killed our internet, but you know. We're not going crazy over here or anything, it's okay. Did everything go well with the budget conversation?
We got to the point, Teresa, where, where we were saying, Dr. Thompson was saying he was looking for a vote to approve these positions and move forward. And I was trying to table this and, and like talk about something else, but we had nothing else to talk about without you.
Well, I'm back now pending any other balls that go flying throughout my house.
You're running the meeting, let me make the motion to accept these positions, go forward with the hires.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Hi, unanimous, okay, great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Was there anything else budget related? Don't think so tonight, right? All right, so moving right along, we don't have any old business. We don't have any policy tonight. We do have one item under new business. So as we've been talking about as a committee, wanting to be more active and involved in legislative advocacy. And Joan brought this forth, so I will let her share a little bit more about what we have on our agenda. But I just want to make sure everybody saw there are a number of documents linked in the agenda for this that you'll want to look at as we talk, as we talk about this resolution.
So this is a resolution that I think initially was put forth by Lincoln Sudbury, the Lincoln Sudbury School Committee, which has two doctors, public health infectious disease expert folks on their school committee, which makes you feel for their Board of Health, right? So basically what this is, is it's an adapted, it's, so it's been adapted from that. But essentially it's basically stating that, you know, our students have a right to public education. Our staff have a right to safe environment, safe working conditions and safe work environments. And so it's requesting that the state allocate funding for regular proactive testing for teacher, staff and students in our schools as a surveillance tool. So basically to help us figure out if there is or is not COVID that's kind of coming in. And to support school districts to identify and procure appropriate testing strategies and supplies, which may include the, the low cost, low sensitive, low sensitivity tests to be used at high frequency. So those are the ones that you've seen coming out in the news around, you know, like the $5, the one to $5 tests. But essentially it's asking the state to step up and, and help coordinate the delivery of these types of things. The delivery of these types of things and um to start putting some funding towards them. Um, and I will acknowledge that the state has said that they will help with testing. Um, but that last guidance from Desi made it appear that there might be like one mobile van driving around. The state testing people if there's already an outbreak in your school. So it appears to be very reactive. What this resolution is, is seeking to be proactive. And then Teresa, I know that you had. We had a little bit of disagreement around this, so.
Well, so, so as a policy.
Wording, around wording, not around intent.
Yeah, so as a policy subcommittee, we were working on this and looking at it further and um just because it has a very. Focus on, a, a very strong focus on public health, I sent it to Sigal Reese just to um get her feedback on it. So one of the documents linked. In the agenda is the email um from Sigal that expresses her concern. So um. There is a revised version of this in the packet. So the one that actually says a resolution of the Norwood School Committee is a revised one after taking in consideration Sigal's feedback. Um, and it changes two things on the original resolution from Lincoln Sudbury. Um, the first, under number one, where it says like, we request the Commonwealth, number one. Allocate funding for regular proactive testing for teachers, staff and students in our schools. Uh, we just added the phrase as a surveillance tool. Um, Sigal just wanted to be really. Clear with us in the community um that the testing reference in this is more than antigen testing. It's not the PCR test. And the antigen is a great surveillance tool, but if you have somebody who tests positive with the antigen test. That's not enough to follow through on isolation and quarantine. You need to then get the positive PCR test. So although this is a great initiative, a great way to. To survey what's going on and get a sense of if you need to send people for the PCR test. She just wants to make sure that we understood. That on the antigen test alone, you don't isolate and quarantine. Um, and then the other area where I think it is up for more discussion uh with everybody is. Not the third point on the original document. On the edited version, I did remove um after discussion with Sigal and her feedback. Um, that she felt that some of the language in the original one around public health um monitoring. Uh, wasn't realistic and also not necessarily um effective in implementing. But comments, questions on the documents in the packet and the two resolutions in front of us?
So to summarize the difference on that last one, it's daily versus weekly updates. Right, that's the big.
Uh, that's part of it. It was um. Daily versus weekly, but it was also, um, just give me one second. Um, in the original document. It asked to report percent positive data and that is not something that Sigal has on a, she can't access that, that's at the state level. Um, and then the other bigger concern was in the original resolution put out by Lincoln Sudbury, they were asking for reports on the number of contacts through the contact tracing. Um, but a contact isn't really a public health. Risk to the community as long as they're quarantined. So Sigal, in her professional opinion, felt that it didn't really do any. Didn't offer any useful measure to report on the number of people who are identified through contact tracing. But to stick with the data of the positive PCR test. Does that make sense? I spent a lot of time talking about testing. I completely understand what I just said may make no sense to anybody.
I understand that we need it funded by the state. That's what we need.
That's the heart of the matter, yes. We want the state to step up and fund and offer resources, absolutely. But are there further questions or discussion?
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the. Version of the resolution that is linked, that's a, that starts with a resolution of the Norwood School Committees of Mass, Norwood School Committee of Massachusetts. And we will strike the S on committees because there is just one of us.
Really? Only one of us? Are you sure?
Everything would be easier if there was more of us. Um, so. The Norwood School Committee. Um, barring that typo, I'd like to make a motion that we um pass that resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dave. Any further discussion?
Figured myself faster than that connection was Mya, actually.
I saw your hand, so I don't know. Uh, any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right, great. So I will have Priscilla uh put that on our letterhead and I will sign it and we will send it to Governor Baker. Uh, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education and Commissioner Riley. Thank you very much. Okay, so I don't believe there's any donations tonight. Correct, Dr. Thompson?
There are not.
So at this time, we have school committee addenda. Uh, Joan, did you have anything this evening?
I have no addenda this evening.
Okay, thank you. Dave, what's on your?
No comments this time.
Thank you. Myev?
Um, I just wanted to um discuss with everyone that. Then the numbers in Norwood and, and some of the immediately surrounding communities have been creeping up a little bit and um, we are now kind of. Last week, we had just entered into the yellow zone. Now we are kind of solidly in the yellow zone. If we stay solidly in the yellow zone. That doesn't change any of our plans, but uh I do wanna remind everyone that if we tip into that red zone, as John Longley was saying, that would threaten all of our fall sports seasons. Um, it would delay the, the in-person portion of school. It wouldn't change when we started remote education, but. Um, so I just want to encourage everyone to um. To do as much social distancing as they can and um hang in there. We're all in this together. Thanks.
Thank you, Myev. Anne Marie?
Nothing tonight.
Hey, thank you. I don't have anything this evening. It's just been a very busy week since we all saw each other last Wednesday. A lot of subcommittee work, a lot of uh union negotiations and. A lot of work by many, many people. Um, but we will be back as a school committee next Wednesday, the ninth, uh, again at seven PM. Uh, we do not need to enter executive session. We were very effective in our executive session before this meeting. So at this time. Very impressed, eight twenty-two. Uh, we are able to adjourn our meeting if there is a motion to do so.
Still move.
Is there a second? Thank you, Anne Marie. All in favor of adjourning?
All right.
Great. Have a wonderful night, everybody, and we will see you again soon.
All right. Stay safe, everyone.
Bye.